Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone, and a happy new year. For those of you who haven't been paying attention, I'm Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. Ken Knuckles. Chair Garadnik is away this week, so I'll be leading today's review session and tomorrow's hearing. We are joined today by Commissioners Benjamin Cerulo Crowe, not Crowe, Dweck? That is your name, Dweck, yes. Gold, Goodrich, Kiermani, Marine.
Goodrich is on Zoom.
Yeah, she is on Zoom, okay, so she'll be joining. Marine and Rampershad.
Maybe Crowe is on Zoom.
We have a relatively brief agenda today, so I'm going to go right through it. Our first item is an application from the Department of Transportation for a major concession in Times Square. This would allow the city through the Times Square Alliance to expand concessions from the existing bowtie further north and south along Broadway. Because the concession area is above a certain threshold of square footage, this application must go through U-Lerp. We'll hear more about that shortly. Next, our other certification of the day is in Flushing, Queens, where we'll hear an application for a commercial overlay at 2724 College Point Boulevard in Queens. The applicant plans to construct a one-story commercial eating and drinking establishment. Moving to pre-hearing reviews, we'll hear details on projects in Queens, Brooklyn, and Manhattan for site acquisitions, commercial mixed use, and hundreds of new homes. First, an application from DEP, Department Environmental Protection, and DCAST, which is Citywide Administrative Services, to acquire two lots in Long Island City, Queens to consolidate laboratory uses from scattered existing sites. Next, we'll hear details on a proposal to facilitate a new seven-story mixed-use light industrial and office building at 2117 37th Avenue in Ravenswood, Queens. Moving to Brooklyn, we'll hear details on a proposal to expand Jennings Hall in Williamsburg, which would facilitate the addition of 218 units of Ayers affordable senior housing. And in Manhattan, we'll hear details on a proposal on East 94th Street to facilitate a mixed-use development with more than 450 homes, about 113 of which would be income-restricted with ground-floor commercial and community facility uses. Lastly, we'll hear a post-hearing follow-up presentation about the Brownsville Arts Center and Apartments, an HPD development that would include 290 affordable homes, community facility space, and outdoor open space. With that, Sarah, please kick us off.
Good afternoon and welcome to City Planning Commission Review Session for Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024. The time is 1:13 PM and a quorum is present. The first item on our agenda is a certification of a major concession in Manhattan Community District 5.
So this application is Times Square major concession. This is an application by the New York City Department of Transportation, and they are seeking a major concession to allow for revenue-generating concessions and sub-concessions within an area along Broadway from West 41st to West 53rd Street, I mean to West 53rd Street, I'm sorry, and this is located in Times Square in Manhattan Community District 5. Currently, there is about 38,000 square feet of existing concession area on Broadway and 7th Avenue between West 41st and West 53rd Streets. This existing concession area is bound by West 53rd Street to the north, Avenue of the Americas to the east, West 42nd Street to the south, and 8th Avenue to the west. The applicant proposes to add about 214,000 square feet of concession area to this, and I want to emphasize that this is all in the public right of way, and zoning districts in the area include the C-6 7 district and the Theater Subdistrict. Here's an area map. The surrounding land uses are mainly commercial and office use and transitions into mixed commercial and residential uses towards the western portion of the map. The area is also served by 14 subway lines at five subway stations and five bus lines, and the Port Authority Bus Terminal is also in the area. Now I'll review some definitions to frame the conversation. So concessions grant the ability for the private use of city-owned property for which the city receives compensation. The photo on the right is the most recent major concession, which is Fordham Plaza. In Section 7 of the U-Lerp rules, one defining characteristic of major concessions is that it's an open use which occupies more than 42,000 square feet of open space other than parkland. Since this major concession will exceed that threshold, it's subject to U-Lerp. With that in mind, I want to show this slide again, so you can see that the blue area where the existing concession area is measures at 38,063 square feet and therefore did not require U-Lerp, and this new proposed area, which is in the red, well exceeds the 42,000 square foot threshold, so that's why this application is here. This application would allow the Department of Transportation to provide the Times Square Alliance with the official means to consistently manage and operate the entire pedestrian plaza areas by using the revenue generated by the concessions that are proposed to go here. So the proposed concession will align the concession area with the existing pedestrian plaza areas in Times Square. It would increase public space amenities and also provide revenue-generating opportunities that would go back into maintaining the space. So here's a photo of an existing pedestrian plaza area, and this view is from the intersection of West 50th Street and Broadway, and the area painted in green is one of the proposed concession areas. Now I'll describe a potential concession layout. So the photo on the left here shows a view from the intersection of West 49th Street and Broadway, and the image on the right is a potential concession layout for this area. So you can see that they have two 10-by-10 concession tents with three sets of cafe tables and chairs on either side, and granite blocks surrounding these as well as planters sectioning off the pedestrian plaza area from the bike lane. And once again, this is just a potential example of a concession layout, but DOT and the Times Square Alliance will be approving the final layouts of the concessions. And this slide shows a view of the existing street layout and the concept that they're looking to adapt here, so you can see that the design of the streets in this area go from more straight and uniform to having a different layout that's intended to slow traffic and accommodate for the increased pedestrian activity. So according to the Department of Transportation, there are three primary opportunities for the bid to generate revenue via DOT's concession agreement, so the first being commercial events, which would be limited to the Times Square bowtie, the second is limited sponsorship, and the third are sub-concessions. So DOT notes that the duration and frequency of concession activity may vary. For example, there may be blocks of Times Square that have concession activity most days out of the year in the form of a small kiosk with seating, and there might be other blocks with little to no concession activity because they mostly serve as circulation blocks and have little programmable space. And so the photos in this slide are examples that DOT provided of what concessions may look like, and I want to know that these are photos from existing concessions going on in Times Square. And as mentioned before, all concession layouts will require DOT sign-off, and events will require approval from the street activity permitting office. We also have additional information in appendix slides on how DOT concessions will be programmed and managed, and we can go into further detail on that at the end of my presentation. So to conclude, according to the rules of the City of New York, a major concession can be defined as an area that contains an open use which occupies more than 42,000 square feet of open space other than parkland, and as previously mentioned, the U-Lerp rules subject a major concession of this size to review. So the CPC's role is to evaluate the appropriateness of the action, given the land uses and context of the proposed concession area boundaries. And I would also like to include that major concessions run with the term of the concession agreement, and so we're having an ongoing conversation between DOT Council and our city law department regarding that. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions? Commissioner Dweck and Commissioner Benjamin.
Thank you. Just some clarification. The revenue from the concessions will go to the Times Square Alliance?
The revenue gets reinvested here. Sorry. The revenue does go to the Alliance but for reinvestment in the maintenance of the public space strictly.
100% of the revenue, there's no rev share with DOT or the city?
Yeah, that's my understanding. DOT can speak to that more specifically, but that's how it's been described to us.
And the Times Square Alliance, that's, the board representation is from the building owners in the area?
That's a good question. I'm not familiar with their board composition, but DOT and Times Square Alliance will be here for public hearing when this returns, so.
Can I just, Mr.? You want to answer that? Just as a general principle, because there's different formulas that may apply to different business improvement districts, but generally speaking, the bid law requires owners of the real estate to be billed. Whether or not the cost to a tenant is passed through their lease to a tenant is a different issue unrelated to the bid directly, but owners are generally the billed sources, and the owners owe the bid assessment to the city.
So my concern is that we're establishing competing uses with the existing buildings by increasing the opportunity for rented spaces, and if, and if there was board representation from the buildings, and I guess it's in their best interest that the Alliance do this to maintain the area versus the economic impact that it would have on them, then I would say that that is fair.
Just on the bid piece of this, again, I can't speak specifically, I would say two things that, and I guess during public review and our public hearing, we'll have the ability to question the representatives of the bid and then perhaps other members of the community, but I would find it hard to believe that this application doesn't come to us without the support of the bid board to take on this responsibility. I don't know that for a fact, but I would assume an action like this would have been an action like this would have been precipitated by some action of the bid board. And also, I think, in terms of the competition issue, it depends on what the concession will be. Some of them we saw as just public open space with tables and chairs. In other cases, it could be a food truck or a restaurant or a kiosk, generally speaking, but yes.
So I, I think from my perspective, I'd like to see the support of the local building owners to see that they're on board with this and otherwise that makes sense. Will there be some kind of reporting on the revenue that was taken in and spent by the, by the bid through this program?
That's a good question. I think that's best directed towards the bid and D O T. But as I said, they'll be available.
And just generally speaking concession agreements, because this is the U L E R P to create the geography. The concession agreement would be the document that would detail all of this. And generally, the concession agreement would identify how the money is being reinvested, how much money. There would be an accounting, I'll just say it that way. But again, we could learn more about that as the, these are all general sort of principles and how the process would work.
And the, it's called the F C R C, I forget, it's franchises.
Franchise concession review.
Yeah, so I believe that there's like an initial engagement process that had to happen prior to the commencement of the U L E R P process, and then it returns towards the end for finalization of the concession agreement. And also, I'd note that this project has actually kind of been in formation and formulation since like twenty fifteen or so. So it is best directed to the bid, but we would hope that there be broad-based buy-in for this.
Thank you.
Commissioner Benjamin.
I have a couple of questions about the environmental review. This is an area that, where pedestrian traffic is very heavy. And in the areas you outlined, from Forty Third to Forty Fourth, where NYPD is and where the Strand has a bookstore and there's cafe tables, it's very hard for pedestrians to get through that. There is also the issue of the, of the people who are dressed as different characters that are in that same area, and they're allowed to be in the area from Forty Fourth to Forty Sixth, I believe. So my question is, the pedestrian analysis of taking away more space from pedestrians showed no impact?
So D O T is the lead agency, and they've determined that it's type two. So that's strictly from the seeker perspective. But when asked qualitatively about how they intend to manage pedestrian flow and again, you know, costumed activities, it's a good question for them, but they did say that they've done analysis as far as where to keep those types of activities to, where to keep clear for pedestrian circulation.
Under what type two did they find this activity?
That's a good question. We can get back to on that.
Generally speaking, one of the reasons for a major concession is that there are potential impacts. So I would really like to understand better how they found narrowing the pedestrian space by so much would have no impact, no significant impact on the pedestrians. Number two, there are other concessions such, and there are other activities such as the hot dog guys and all of that. Are they going to be moved? Are they part of this? What is the intention with those businesses?
That's a good question, and that is definitely best addressed to D O T when they're here for public hearing.
And number three, there are bus stops, the Broadway bus. And how are they rerouted? Are they asking the T A to reroute the buses? Or are the bus stop shelters still going to be there? I don't have enough information and can't see enough to make any judgment about whether this would be a reasonable thing to do, particularly during the hours when there are tourists, business people, all of whom are competing for some limited sidewalk space that really doesn't include sitting in a table. I mean, most of those tables are empty most of the time that I've seen them.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a good question. Again, I think that this is, like, there will be a lot of really robust discussion at the public hearing with D O T. They've thought through this process and they will have answers.
Okay, but we won't get the answers until after the community board and our president have all weighed in. So we'll get answers late in the game, which is too bad.
Although, I mean, we can also pass along to D O T that they discuss these matters during the community board and.
And that they have significant concerns about whether this was inappropriate.
Yeah, they, they take the feedback from the commission very seriously. And we'll make sure to impart that.
Thank you, Commissioner Benjamin. Other questions? Commissioner Gold, hi, excuse me. Just a couple of, I guess, points of follow-up. One is, so clear that the dollars from the concessions will be reinvested. Can you talk a little bit about, if we know, what those reinvestments are?
It's just been described to us as maintenance. Currently, the plazas are in interim treatments. If there's a capital build-out, that might also be something that the dollars can go into, but that is like subject to the range between the bid and D O T. They have obviously participated in the existing Times Square plaza and the capital build-out of that. I think that while we see the space in many ways is very successful, I think that it was a good learning experience for the two of them around like maintenance and indemnification and the materials that are used. So they can speak more directly to that, but it's been described to us as maintenance of the space. And our assumption is that that includes routine daily, but also if and when there's a capital build-out, which I think we would all hope that it potentially could be used for that. But that is definitely for D O T's legal team to.
Yeah, that would definitely be a helpful point of info. And then the other question I had is when we think about the public amenities that they'll be adding, right, so the concessions I sort of get, but as we think about public amenities, do we have a sense, I mean, is that more tables and chairs? Or what's going on there, if we know?
Yeah, so, I mean, D O T has described it to us in kind of like a very broad-based way that it could include like free and ticketed events, oh, sorry, free ticketed events or just free events. The tickets would only be if there's a capacity-related issue for it. That there are limited sponsorship opportunities. So that could be, like, they cited in other plazas, Yahoo sponsors like free Wi-Fi. And so there's like a banner for that, or another company might sponsor like a planter. And these are all temporary, but, but like, D O T can definitely speak more precisely to the range of what they could possibly envision. It is a little tricky because that will be subject to discussions with the bid. And so what we've shared is what we have on it so far, and it's all in the sense like potential. But yeah, food concessions are certainly going to be part of it, and tables and chairs are certainly going to be a part of it. And again, they named these other types of programming that could be used as part of it.
Got it. Yes, so it's, I guess I would say for D O T too, just, you know, something else that would be, I think, helpful. I may just be speaking for myself, but I think maybe for everyone, if we can see more of the whole picture, right, the whole circle of this is what we're going to give, this is what we're going to get, and this is how the public's going to benefit, and I think that would help a lot.
Agree, yeah. And we'll make sure that D O T provides like a very robust presentation at public hearing.
Commissioner Benjamin.
And one more thing, if they could provide a real dimensioned plan with the dimensions of the sidewalk, the street, and I saw the plan here, but a real dimensioned plan of the entire area and what they envision and what is left for pedestrians exclusively, that would be really helpful.
Understood. We can ask them for that. And I'm sure that they've, you know, then since they have an interim treatment there, I'm sure they have drawings of that somewhere.
Commissioner Surrul.
This is less of a question for the city planning team, but as you follow up the conversation with D O T and as D O T talks with the administration generally, you referenced sort of liability-related issues. And as someone who is very familiar with the ongoing discussion and in part debate about how not-for-profit partners who are engaged in basically maintaining the city's public realm are protected or not protected is a huge one. And while this is obviously an application by the Times Square Alliance, this isn't something the city's saying, we're going to do this and you're going to run it for us. The, and I know they've been engaged in this discussion with all of the bids who are maintaining or managing public space around the city, and not just bids, that goes beyond. There are other not-for-profit public space partners in the city. But the, to have a sense of, or perhaps a resolution to the issue of how to best indemnify and protect the public space partners, that would be very helpful also as this application moves through public review.
Very good point. Thank you.
Did D O T look at how, if there was a casino approved at Times Square, how that would affect their plans?
I do not know. That is a very good question. And so we'll make sure D O T takes note of that. And as they go out to the community board as well, they'll probably be speaking to that as well.
Thank you.
Other questions? Obviously, D O T's got a lot of questions to answer, among others. And they will be in attendance at the public.
Certainly, certainly, as well as the Times Square Alliance.
If there are no further questions, then this matter is certified. Thank you.
Thank you.
The second item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map amendment in Queens Community District Seven. Our presenter is Cameron Burroughs.
All right, good afternoon, commissioners. This is a private application for twenty-seven twenty-four College Point Boulevard. This private application was filled by Backley Realty Corp. requesting a zoning map amendment to rezone the project area located in Flushing Community District Seven from an R five B zoning district to an R five B C two-three zoning district and an R four zoning district to an R four C two-three zoning district. This action would facilitate the development of a new one-story commercial building with a total floor area of approximately two thousand five hundred square feet. College Point Boulevard is a principal arterial thoroughfare that travels north and south through the northeastern side of Queens and correspondingly contains a mix of uses and densities, including a high concentration of mid-rise apartment buildings, low-density single-family homes, and commercial corridors along College Point Boulevard. Approximately three and a half miles to the southeast is the commercial core of downtown Flushing with a high concentration of high-rise commercial, mixed-use, and residential buildings. LaGuardia Airport is west of the project area across the Flushing Bay and north of the project area as the College Point neighborhood, a low-density primarily residential area. Nearby, nearby major highways include White Stone Expressway going through the Bronx and Queens. And the closest MTA subway station is the Main Street Flushing Seven Line and downtown Flushing, approximately three and a half miles southeast of the project area. The project area outlined in the dotted black line is split between R four and R five B districts with R four A, M one-one, and M two-one districts in the surrounding area. The project area is surrounded by low zoning districts, including an R five B zoning district to the north of the project area and an R four district directly west of the project area, between Hundred and Nineteenth Street and College Point Boulevard. The surrounding area mainly consists of residential, construction supply, and home goods, plumbing and metal wholesalers, and some corporate offices. The NYPD has a training facility located directly southeast of the project area. And the project area was originally mapped as an R four zoning district in nineteen sixty-one, and in two thousand and five, the College Point rezoning rezoned all or portions of one hundred sixty-one blocks along, within the College Point neighborhood and rezoned the proposed project area from an R four zoning district to a split zoning district consisting of an R four zoning district and an R five B district. The proposed development site is twenty-seven twenty-four College Point Boulevard and is located on the corner of the intersection formed by College Point Boulevard and Twentieth Avenue with approximately sixty-six feet of frontage on College Point Boulevard and approximately one hundred and thirty feet of frontage on Twentieth Avenue and a total lot area of approximately five thousand seven hundred square feet. The proposed development site on Lot Twelve is owned by the applicant and is currently vacant and unimproved. The proposed development, outlined in red, will consist of a use group six eating and drinking establishment with an accessory drive-through, and five accessory parking spaces will be located in the rear. The proposed drive-through and parking will be accessed by College Point Boulevard, and vehicles going through the drive-through will exit onto Twentieth Avenue. The adjacent parcels to the west are developed with two-story, single-family homes and the Q sixty-five bus stops to the east of the project area on College Point Boulevard and make stops in College Point, downtown Flushing, and to the Jamaica Long Island Railroad Station and air train to JFK Airport. This tax map shows the project area outlined with the dotted black line and the development site outlined in red. The proposed project area includes twenty-seven eighteen, twenty-seven twenty, and twenty-seven twenty-four College Point Boulevard, Hundred and Nineteenth, Fifty-Eight, Twenty-Seventh Avenue, and One Twenty, Thirty-Five, Twentieth Avenue, on block four-two-nine-two, with lots ten, eleven, twelve, sixty, and seventy-five all being partial lots. Lot Twelve is owned by the applicant. Here we can see the project area surrounded by lower-density residential to the north and west and manufacturing to the south and east. So this is a view of the development site facing northwest from College Point Boulevard. This is a view of the development site facing north on Twentieth Avenue. And this is a view of the development site facing west from College Point Boulevard. The applicant proposes to build a one-story commercial building totaling approximately two thousand five hundred square feet. The new building will be a use group six eating and drinking establishment with a drive-through. Vehicles will enter from College Point Boulevard and exit onto Twentieth Avenue, indicated by the gray arrows, and pedestrians will enter and exit onto College Point Boulevard, indicated by the red arrows. This is a front elevation of the proposed development from College Point Boulevard and Twentieth Avenue. And here we can see where vehicles will exit onto Twentieth Avenue from the drive-through. To facilitate this development, the applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment to change the existing R five B and R four to an R five B C two-three and an R four C two-three to establish a commercial overlay over the existing zoning. This would introduce a commercial F A R of one over the existing zoning, and the R four and R five B districts will remain. In conclusion, the private applicant, Backley Realty Corp., is requesting a zoning map amendment to rezone the project area located in Flushing Community District Seven from an R five B zoning district to an R five B C two-three zoning district and an R four zoning district to an R four C two-three zoning district. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Questions? Commissioner Marine.
So I'm noticing, and I'm looking at this strangely because we are, we're being asked to rezone to a district that also contains residential, but is only going to be building commercial.
Right, so this is going to establish a commercial overlay over that existing residential.
No, I do realize that, but what's being built, the actual building, is just a commercial one-story building, and it's not taking advantage of the residential portion of the zoning that's being placed.
Right, that's correct.
Thank you.
Other questions?
One more question, I'm sorry. Can you just find out, I know you don't have the answer right now, how many units that would yield, please?
How many units if it was residential?
If they were to build residential on top of the commercial.
Okay, I can get back to the applicant.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Other questions? This matter is certified. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, commissioners.
The third item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a site selection and acquisition in Queens Community District Two. Our presenter is Bree Miha on Zoom.
Hi, good afternoon, Vice Chair Knuckles and Commissioners. Good afternoon.
Next slide, please. So just as a reminder, this application was certified on September 11th of this year. It's an application submitted by the New York City Department of Environmental Protection and the New York City Department of Citywide Administrative Services. It is to relocate and consolidate four DEP bureaus and their laboratory operations to two existing buildings in Long Island City, Queens. The laboratory operations, as you see here on the picture at the left, would be located at 2402 49th Avenue, and their vehicle storage facility would be located at 2520 Borden Avenue. These are just about two blocks away from each other. Next slide, please. Okay, and the applicant is seeking a site selection and acquisition to relocate four bureaus currently operating throughout Manhattan, Queens, and Brooklyn to a partially vacant building in the centralized location of Long Island City. On this map here to the left, you can see the blue stars are depicting the current locations where the DEP bureaus are located, and the green star is indicating the location to which they would all be relocated to. Next slide, please. Okay, and on November 2nd of 2023, Queens Community Board Two voted 27 in favor, zero against, and zero abstaining, a recommendation of approval. Next slide, please. Okay, and on November 30th of 2023, the Queens Borough President held a public hearing for this application, and on December 19th, the Queens Borough President submitted a recommendation of approval. I do just want to highlight some questions that came up during the public hearing as well as some questions that had come up back in review session in September. At the Borough President's public hearing, there was a question that resembled former Commissioners Bozark's question, which was regarding the future use of the facilities where the labs are being relocated from. Additionally, former Commissioner Bozark had asked if these sites were city-owned. The application has mentioned the following, and they can also expand further at a public hearing. The applicant mentioned that the current labs at the headquarters site would be kept by DEP for office use, and they would continue to run, to complete their, their current lease, while the two facilities at the water waste treatment locations are city-owned. And the one at the Ward Island, the labs are currently in trailers, and so these trailers would be likely discontinued, whereas the labs in the Newtown Creek location, there is one lab that will remain at this facility, which would allow this lab, this remaining lab, to have more access to space to continue operating. And then in reference to a question asked by Commissioner Osorio regarding flood vulnerability and what investments or best practices are a part of the applicant's toolbox, the applicant mentioned that the vehicles in the loading dock area and at the storage facility would be most at risk, and in case of a forecasted storm, these vehicles would be relocated. And some other best practices would include deactivating electrical vehicle chargers, making sure that their cars are fueled, and protecting and relocating generators. And this would be all that I have for today. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. This is on for a public hearing tomorrow, so there'll be an opportunity to ask any additional questions. But for now, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah.
The fourth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map amendment in Queens Community District One. Our presenter is Derek Jazin.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Happy New Year.
And Happy New Year. Okay. We'll get started. This application was certified on September 11th of 2023 and is now back for pre-hearing. This is a private application by Parts Authority in the Ravenswood neighborhood of Queens Community District One to facilitate the development of a new seven-story mixed-use office and light manufacturing building with 84,500 total square feet, consisting of 21,400 commercial square feet and 63,100 light industrial square feet. The proposed development includes 58 parking spaces in the cellar and subcellar levels and two loading berths fronting along 22nd Street. The applicant seeks a zoning map amendment from an existing M11 zoning district to an M15 zoning district. This application was certified by the Commission on September 11th of 2023, and on, excuse me, on October 17th of 2023, Queens Community Board One voted 25 in favor and zero against and zero abstained recommendation of approval with conditions. These conditions included the critical need to retain jobs in large businesses in New York such as Parts Authority. Queens Bridge and Long Island City should be target areas for hiring programs, and a strategic plan from the developer should focus on the local area for outreach for new startup business plans and training programs. And on November 2nd of 2023, the Queens Borough President held a hearing on this application and submitted a recommendation of approval with conditions. These conditions included that there should be a minimum of 30% goal to include minority and women, minority and women-owned business enterprise firms, hiring of local residents, and working with locally-based organizations and community groups for outreach and job fairs when hiring and contracting for this project. There should be quarterly reporting for these hiring initiatives to the Borough President and council member until the hiring goal has been reached, and the applicant team should partner with a community-based organization for local hiring assistance with special attention to NYCHA Queens Bridge houses. The applicant will be able to, will be available here tomorrow to address questions raised by the Commission during certification, including questions surrounding industrial development agency benefits and sustainability measures. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Derek. Questions? All righty, this is on for hearing tomorrow. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
The fifth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendments in Brooklyn Community District One. Our presenter is David Weissglas.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
There we go. Good afternoon. This is a pre-hearing for the Jennings Hall expansion, which is a zoning map amendment and zoning text amendment, which was certified on September 11th of 2023, and as stated, is located in Brooklyn Community District One. The applicant here is St. Nick's Alliance, and they're proposing a map amendment and a zoning text amendment to facilitate a 14-story building with approximately 2.81 FAR for that building with residential and commercial space at the ground floor. Residential will be all heirs' units, those are affordable income, sorry, affordable independent residences for seniors. 218 heirs' units are being proposed. This will act as the third wing of the existing Jennings Hall complex. In addition to the existing 150 units, 218 are proposed, leading to 368 total heirs' units on the site after completion. Here we can see the map of the zoning changes being proposed, and I'll go into a little bit more detail of this in the next slide, but in general, we can see the R7A being rezoned to R7X at the northwest corner of the development site, the intersection of Powers Street and Bushwick Avenue, R6B being rezoned to R78 at the, R7A at the northeast corner of the development site, and R7A with a C24 overlay being rezoned to R7X with a C24 overlay along Grand Street at the south. So to outline a little bit more clarity, here's something I put together. Another way to think about it is that the R7A existing on the property will be rezoned to R7X, the R6B jutting along Powers Street will be rezoned to R7A, and the C24 overlay, which is shown on the site here in that hash mark, will simply remain. And so the R7A, C24 will be rezoned to R7X, C24. Community Board One held a public hearing on October 11th, 2023, and on November 14th recommended approval of the project, 32 in favor, none opposed, and one abstention. The Borough President held a hearing on the 16th of October and held a vote on December 13th to recommend approval of the project. Neither the community board nor the Borough President had any conditions for approval stated. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. What is the delta in terms of the number of units yield between when you go from the R6 to the R, R7?
The exact, it depends on a couple of the factors, obviously, the size of the units, you know, take that into account, so I don't have the exact number in front of me. I can get that for you and make sure that the applicant knows and can elaborate upon that tomorrow at the hearing, if that's helpful.
Thank you. Commissioner Benjamin?
Quick questions. One, is this being funded under the federal 202 program?
Not to my understanding. They're, they're seeking, I guess the more accurate answer is I don't know. They are seeking funding through HPD through the SARA term sheet for affordable housing for seniors, but I don't know the specific funding mechanism.
Okay, if you could let them know that I would like to know the, the funding and whether 202 was part of it.
Surely.
And say, what size are the units?
I think I have a little more detail.
There have been concerns in the past when the units are all studios for seniors. That leads to some problems, particularly if they need to have care and they need to have someone else. Having a studio does not let you really have, live in help.
Understood. I would need to get back, I thought I had that in here as well. I believe it is noted in the racial equity reports, but I don't have the exact, sorry, it is right here, actually. It's a mix of studio and one bedrooms. The exact number of studios versus one bedrooms, my understanding is that they do have a general requirement to allocate those somewhat equally among the different tiers of income restrictions. That's my understanding of it, and I can clarify, and I can confirm that is the case.
Okay.
But yeah, it, it's a mix of one bedrooms and studio units.
And you'll get back with what that mix is?
Surely, certainly.
And the size?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you. This is on for hearing tomorrow.
Thank you.
The sixth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendments in Manhattan Community District Eight. Our presenter is Ali Sun.
Hello.
Just wait a second for presentation. All right, this is the pre-hearing presentation for East 94th Street rezoning, which was certified by the Commission at the October 16th review session. This is a private application by LEB East 94 LLC in the Yorkville neighborhood of Community District Eight in Manhattan, seeking a zoning map amendment from an M14 district to a C28 district and a C46 district and a zoning text amendment to MAP MIH. The applicant is proposing a rezoning of the mid-block of East 94th Street between First and Second Avenues. The existing M14 district is a vestige of a larger historic manufacturing area, most of which has already been rezoned to commercial zoning districts. The proposed C46 district is an extension of an existing C46 district south of the rezoning area, and the proposed C28 district is an extension of the existing C28 district east of the rezoning area along Second Avenue. If the proposed rezoning is approved, the applicant plans to demolish the existing buildings on lots 13, 14, and 18, which currently contain one vacant residential walk-up building and two parking garages. The proposed development would then be built on these three lots. Lots 6, 10, and 111 are proposed to remain as-is with their air rights used in the proposed development. These lots include commercial office buildings, a school gymnasium, and a residential walk-up building. At the review session prior to certification, the Commission had a question about the ownership of all the tax lots in the rezoning area. The applicant has confirmed that lots 13, 14, and 18 are all owned by affiliates of the project developer. Lots 6, 10, and 111 are under separate fee ownership and will remain that way with the developer purchasing their air rights. There was also a question about whether there are any rent-regulated units existing within the project area. The only occupied residential building on the proposed zoning lot is Lot 111, which is occupied by a five-story residential building with 15 dwelling units. This is one of those air rights parcels that will remain as-is as part of the proposed development. The applicant does not know how many, but understands that at least some of the dwelling units are rent-regulated. If there are any further questions about this, the applicant can answer them tomorrow at the public hearing. If the proposed actions are approved, the applicant intends to build a new, as-of-right, 46-story building. The proposed development would have a total gross floor area of about 434,000 square feet and contain 452 to 483 dwelling units, including 113 to 145 income-restricted units under MIH Option 1, and about 23,500 square feet of commercial or community facility space. On November 8th, 2023, Manhattan Community Board Eight voted to approve the application with the following conditions: that the proportion of affordable units be increased to 30%, but otherwise subject to the same terms as the original application, including the average affordability of 60% AMI; that the building be required to remain a rental building for at least 15 years; that open space be incorporated into the site; that 200 parking spaces be retained on the site; that the height of the building be reduced to a maximum of 355 feet; that construction use all union labor or pay prevailing wage; and this resolution passed with a vote of 32 in favor, four opposed, and three abstaining. On November 20th, 2023, the Manhattan Borough President recommended approval of the application with the following conditions: to maximize the number of affordable units in the building by working with the city to find funding sources to increase affordable housing in Manhattan Community District Eight; to ensure a bedroom mix that reflects the needs of families within the district with the inclusion of two- and three-bedroom units; and to consider options for reducing the building height within the as-of-right building envelope in the rezoning area that do not reduce the total number of units, including the number of affordable units. Thank you so much for listening. Are there any questions for me?
Are there any questions? There appears not to be. Okay.
Are the size of the apartments, since the Borough President spoke about increasing two and, are there two- and three-bedroom apartments in the proposed mix?
I think that the applicant will be better able to answer questions about the unit mix, but this application to city planning is not approving the proposed development, it's only approving the rezoning.
I understand that, but I'm sure they submitted something about that.
Sure.
Okay, I will ask them tomorrow.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much.
Other questions? Thank you. This is on for hearing.
Thank you.
Turning now to future votes, right?
For consideration on Wednesday, January 3rd, 2024, staff have prepared reports for Timbale Terrace in Manhattan Community District 11. On 8808 Justice Avenue, restricted declaration termination, this though item is going to be laid over. And lastly, for consideration on Wednesday is a SNAD zoning authorization in San Island Community District 2, 91 and 95 West Century Road. Any questions on those? If not, we'll move to post-hearing. Post-hearing follow-ups. For post-hearing follow-up, we have Brownsville Arts Center and Apartments, which had a public hearing at the December 13th public meeting. There were letters included in your materials, and Jukey Sai is here to discuss and available for questions.
Jukey, thank you.
Hi, thank you, Commissioner Benjamin. Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. The CPC will vote on Brownsville Arts Center and Apartments on January 24th, 2024. The department supports the proposed actions, which would facilitate the development of a new nine-story, 258,000-square-foot development with 290 income-restricted housing units, 26,000 square feet of community facility space. space for arts and performance, and seventeen thousand square feet of outdoor open space on Rockaway Avenue in Brownsville, Community District Sixteen, Brooklyn. The department believes the proposed R seven A and R seven A C two-four districts with MIH are appropriate. The site is well-suited for additional density, given its proximity to public transit and the local, local commercial corridor on Pitkin Avenue. The department believes that the disposition of vacant city-owned land for the development of income-restricted housing and community facility space is appropriate. Regarding design, given the mid-block location and proposed depth of the public open space, the department believes careful consideration must be given to the design to ensure that the space feels inviting and safe. The department will continue to work with HPD to incorporate strategies such as activating the ground floor, ensuring clear lines of sight from the street with an unobstructed and inviting entryway, ample lighting and visible signage, and potential lot line treatments, including a gate for closure during off-hours. Additionally, the department anticipates working with HPD on the facade design strategies to better differentiate the building segments in relation to street adjacencies. Regarding parking, and I want to respond here to some, the request from the Community Board to add parking, as well as some questions from the Commission regarding parking. Like the Borough President's office, the department supports HPD's decision to invest limited city resources in housing and a community facility space rather than parking. And I want to note, we are belief that this is a particularly appropriate, uh, development site for no parking, given its proximity to transit, and just talk a little bit about that for a second. The Rockaway Avenue C train is about a half a mile to the north. The Rockaway Avenue three, four stop is about point-six or seven miles to the south. The Atlantic Avenue L train and East New York LIRR station is about six miles, excuse me, point-six miles to the west, and the B twelve, B fourteen, B sixty, and B seven buses all stop in the vicinity. And I just want to double down on this, I've taken a site visit, took me about ten minutes to walk from the two-three stop up to the development, or that Rockaway Avenue stop, and then about another nine or ten minutes to walk to the C train stop. And while I was on my visit, both the B twelve and B sixty buses stopped just a half a block north of the, half a block north of the development. So it is right in a really transit-rich area of the city. So in conclusion, these actions are consistent with the community goals shared in the Brownsville Plan, which was the result of a collaborative, multi-year planning process conducted by HPD. The department is proud to support HPD's efforts to make good on the city's commitment to bring a cultural hub, as well as over two, twenty-five hundred new affordable homes, representing more than a billion dollars of investment in housing to Brownsville. That concludes our recommendations, thank you.
Thank you, Jukey. Would not, uh, parking come at the expense of housing units ultimately?
Yes, ultimately, um, I think we believe and HPD believes that the provision of parking would cost, I think it's something like sixty-seven thousand dollars a parking spot. That money, you know, otherwise could be used for apartments, um, or for the cultural hub in the ground floor.
Thank you. Questions? All right, we vote this on the twenty-fourth, I believe?
Yes.
All righty, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sarah, do we have any other items for consideration today?
There are no other items on the agenda, Vice Chair.
All right, with that, uh, we'll adjourn the meeting and hopefully see everyone tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.